Already we will officially begin our meeting. Welcome. I think we've opened, have you?
I just did, yeah. Good to meet you.
I think the only question on the agenda in this was how you wanted to do the dates.
Oh, that's right. I did bring that with me.
Yeah, I think it was just.
Because I emailed that to you guys. Let me go print that off.
I have it here too.
I can see an agenda at all, actually.
I'll print them off, so.
Did you guys see, I think, I know I forwarded you and Jay the proposed dates as well.
I have the dates, yeah.
Were those all good for you all?
Yeah, they're Tuesdays, and I'm just gonna make Tuesdays my day to meetings, I guess.
Gotcha, gotcha, yeah.
As long as we're down here by the time I go over before supervisors.
We don't want this out.
No.
We kind of tried to put together, I mean, we know things will come up, but for the whole, pretty much from now until May, we never know how long it's gonna take with the state getting the final numbers, if those, what we proposed, all those meetings.
February 20th.
I think we changed it to February 21st was the updated one. That one was changed to February 21st on the updated one he sent.
That's Wednesday.
That is a Wednesday, it is correct.
And so the question was, did you want to keep them on Tuesdays or Wednesdays? The first schedule, I think, was all Tuesdays.
It is. Why did we change it back into the Wednesday? Why would that be changed? Do you remember that?
Because I asked the question, sent back the question about the fact that the board was gonna have a meeting on Tuesday nights.
Yeah, I'm not sure why that one particular.
And then we said we could do Wednesdays before our work sessions.
Well, I don't mind keeping it Tuesdays, it just consolidates for me, frankly.
Okay. So the 20th would probably be better.
I think that was the only one that was changed, right? What, from the 20th to the 21st? I just had a screenshot of the dates. Because the other joint meetings, the 12th and the 17th and the 15th.
Now, March 12th.
Be a joint meeting.
That's the, that's the joint meeting for the entire, both boards.
Right.
Yes.
And that's a five, right?
I think so.
Because our other meetings are gonna be at four, right?
Yes.
That was the full board joint meetings, yes. And then, the 17th would just be the joint committee meetings, and then the 15th would be the joint committee meetings. We were just kinda talking about, um...
And Ed, I know sometimes we would switch off and on, you know, sometimes down here, sometimes down on here, and, um, so we can do that if you want, however you wanted to. The only, the only ones would be those at the 15th Street if we're gonna do them on when we have work sessions.
Well, they were just saying Tuesdays work.
Oh, Tuesday. They were saying Tuesday.
I was not consolidating meetings on Tuesdays, so.
Four o'clock?
Four o'clock meetings.
Okay. So you want me to go print out my original one I sent?
Let's do that. Sorry. So, smartest plan B.
Well, what did they do, shift them to Wednesdays?
Yes.
The ones with you all.
I hit pretty.
We shifted to Wednesdays.
Yeah, I hit, replied that Tuesdays would be fine.
Okay.
Because that didn't get it working though.
I don't think that got to us.
Uh-uh.
Okay.
So.
You remember your point, too?
I remember the question, I don't remember the response.
Oh, okay.
I do remember the question, yes.
It got too far down on your hearing out to see.
That's why, because that's why I forwarded to you guys, too, to make sure you guys had it.
Oh, you did, again, and I, yeah, and I had, and I had replied, so.
Yeah, I don't think that got to us. We got the January, and February 6th is just us, so that's good. We'll change the 21st back to the 20th. I think that's what I'm hearing, correct?
Mm-hmm. He said he's gonna bring that up to schedule.
Yeah, and that would be at, at four. March 5th is just us, the 12th.
I got this.
That's the big one, right?
From the superintendent.
That would be everybody's.
When, I think Friday, you're no king bag. How about, you could do Tuesday. I hadn't talked to Jay, and I figured we'll just talk.
Oh, okay, well, then, you, yeah, you did get my reply.
I think I got, I think I got your reply, but I think it was Friday.
Okay.
April 16th is us, and then April.
And then what we did last year is we would have one meeting here and one meeting down the hall.
So April 16th.
It's April 17th, yeah, should we just, we might need to add that.
So this was the original date, sorry, that was in an email, the other one I threw over on a worksheet, so if we want to compare those dates. This works, because those were all on a Tuesday previously.
So we, so we won't have two meetings on the 6th, April 16th and 17th, are you talking about just doing one joint meeting, or? Because you were.
Because originally, we were gonna meet on the 16th, but on this one, you put a joint committee on the 17th.
Well, that's because we had to change dates with, we're aligning to our board meeting, and, I was trying to take it off the Tuesday and put it on the Wednesday, so sometimes we had to jump down a week.
So I think we're good, we're good to move February 21st back to the 20th.
So we're gonna take this Plan A, right?
The joint? And you want to just go back to all these, then?
On March 12th, the joint meeting with everybody, what time is that one at?
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock, okay. But all the others are four, correct?
Yes, yes.
And the 19th.
And what we always tried to do was.
So April 9th, that's a 21.
I mean, with my group, and then we meet with the board of supervisors, and then we meet, and then we meet with you guys again. So that's why it's rotating, so that we can go back and.
Talking about the 12th, where's the whole board?
Well, no, I'm talking about the way the schedule's laid out.
Right here, the bold ones with the joint ones?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, so I'm gonna have to go, so I put these on my calendar, I know I'm good, I'm gonna have to go back and look and make sure that we're going back to the plan, to this one, that these dates work coming out. And I don't wanna waste y'all's time with that right now, but I was assuming you were going to this one and not this one.
No, it's okay, we'll, uh, just look at your calendar, and then if we need the.
The next one sounds like it's good, right?
Because all these, because I know when we all talked the first time, you guys said Tuesdays were best.
Yeah.
So that's what, all these are, I think, almost everything except for today was a, should be a Tuesday.
So we all, good, we'll take a look at these, then.
And down here in April, May, June, are we thinking we might ask them if we need them?
If we need them. That's because by, by April 30th, I mean, we should kinda know where we're at, and, I mean, I've just put, May 14th, that would be if we need to have a meeting, I mean, typically.
Soon as the legislature goes home, we should be safe.
That's optimistic.
I mean, that's why, and then, I just listed, the others are as needed, down below there, we'll get into July, August, September, October, November, I mean, you know, if we want to, we have those dates set, but.
Will we get those canceled, then?
Yes, just depending upon what we have and where we're at and what we need to do.
Okay.
All right? Okay. So, just kind of recap where we're at, and what we discussed at our budget meeting, I presented to my budget committee, was kind of just getting us started on where we're at in the process at this point in time. And, right now, the only budget we have out is, of course, the governor's budget. That one is not very favorable for us, as a school division, and so we'll, we'll get into that here in a second. I wanted to talk about student membership, so that's this document here, wanted to be sure that you had this document, so you can kinda see that we, you know, our members are really holding steady. You go back to 2021, that's the COVID year, so we dropped from the previous year. Now, one thing this does not include on this number, you need to remember that we have around 250 pre-K students that we serve, and that's not included in this count, because that's a separate pot, so we have, you know, we're serving around 5,200 students right now, but around 240, 250 of those are pre-K.
They don't count in the formula or anything.
They, we get, it's a totally different, it's VPI, they fund us on a number of slots, and that's.
Not calculated anywhere in the.
It's, yeah, I mean, but it's not, it's not counted as ADM.
Mm-hmm.
So when you, when you look at that. So, the next thing would be the projection from the governor.
Before you do that.
Rob's got an update, so.
Take one and pass it down, and disregard the one you have. Thanks to Mrs. Lowe's keen eye, there was what I thought was a formula driving one number, and there wasn't, it was just a number typed in, so that made things, I mean, honestly, worse for us.
All right, Rob, you wanna walk us through this document?
Yeah, what this is, and particularly the left-hand half of the page is what really, that's the state funding, and that's what we have the governor's proposed budget on. So what we've done is sort of give a history there of, over the years, going back three years, what our state funding has been. Our average daily membership is shown there, and that's what we budgeted for. That's important, because our membership drives a lot of our state funding, so how many students we have, many of the revenue programs there are based on how many students we have, so it's important to be as accurate as you can in projecting that, we don't wanna over-project it, because then we'll make commitments and not have the funding coming through to do it, and you don't wanna be way low, because then you end up with more money and need to, you know, work through that situation. So, that said, if you look at the column there, the governor's proposed budget, you can see that we do have some increases and some decreases. As Dr. Daly said, I think, a little earlier, sometimes we receive with one hand, but it's taken with another hand. When you come down to the very bottom, there is an increase in the state funding, and since we met the other evening, I've adjusted this all-in funding, all-in per pupil funding, which is under category two, the incentive programs. The state originally had us receiving all million seven, whatever that number adds up to, in this fiscal year. Well, we're not gonna do that, we're gonna spend the 276, 947 this year and carry the others over, the rest of it over, to next year to fund those student support coach positions, I believe.
And that's right, so, you know, we received all that CARES money, and we had, what was it, 52?
51, I think, originally, yeah, 17 times three.
Yeah, 51 original positions, and then last year, because we lost some of that funding, we took it down to 34, and now this year, we're gonna take it down again, because this, this funding is again reducing, so we're now taking that down to 21. And there's a little bit of a shift with them, I mean, at the elementary, they've been doing this the entire time, they've been focused on remediation, small groups, and since this is the all-in, they're gonna continue to do that remediation, small groups. It's a little more of a shift at the middle school, where they were doing some other roles with supports and things of that nature, and there'll be more of a shift to more of the remediation and intervention. So these are those, those CARES positions that, one, our schools, and if you talk to administrators and teachers, they're gonna say, we need these people. They do so much in our school building, so much for our students, they're very vital to what goes on in our school, but now we're, we're trickling down from, like Rob said, we started out, when this program first started, with 51, we're down now to 21. So, and that funding, you know, that's, that's the last of it. This is, if you remember our CARES funding, we were gonna do this program for three years. This was the last year of the original three, and then when we got this all-in tutoring, I was like, all right, let's see if we can extend it one more year to keep some people in our buildings. And so, when we have that, when we had that adjustment in October, November, we met as a, you know, group and just said, hey, let's try to make sure we keep those coaches one more year if we can, and so that's how that funding is, is tied to, and where it's at.
So the right-hand column combines all of our other revenue sources, federal revenue, we haven't adjusted, the awards aren't made on them until typically July or so, June or July, so what we basically do is, from one year to the next level, fund those, and they usually come in pretty close to that. We'll look at those and see, those numbers may get adjusted, they haven't been scrutinized yet, except for the very last one, the CARES funding, which we know is going to zero, so we're showing that they're going to zero. The miscellaneous revenue is just that, it's revenue for fees and different things, again, we've left that pretty much level funded, and we'll look closer at it, but it's not a real big source of revenue. The next item is something that we use this year, we have a healthcare fund that's left over from when we were a self-insured health insurance provider, and it, we took $300,000 from that fund this year to help keep our insurance premiums, where the employee did not see their premium go up this year, but there's not going to be enough money in that fund. It had about $400,000 in, and it's been drawn down below, lower than that, because we do pay for a healthcare consultant and some other costs out of it, so that will not be available next year, so that is where the, I thought there was a, a formula there that was taking care of that negative, but there wasn't, and that's what reduced our bottom line. The county appropriation, just for illustrative purposes, I left it level funded, of course, that'll be a discussion for future meetings, once we see where everything else comes. And then just a summary of the sources, and the fact that, basically, we'd have a couple hundred thousand less, however, that CARES funding, there are expenditures related to it that will disappear, so in reducing the number of those positions that Dr. Ballinger mentioned, that means that we basically, when all said and done, would have about $351,000, $661 to work with next year, to take care of any, any salary initiatives, any, any type of expenses.
And so the first thing that we always do when we start our budget years, we always start off with looking at a step raise for everybody, so one thing that I always wanna do is give everybody a yearly step. Also, we'll look at some different things, so I did ask Ms. Poe to run a comparison for a 3% plus a step for teachers and instructional assistants, like we did, like we've done in the past, while she's running just the step raises, just so that we can get some figures to see what's out there and what our numbers are gonna look like. When we get into, as far as staffing purposes, there are some things that we have to have this next year, that are not included in this year's budget, that we have to automatically include in next year's budget, and that is, for instance, our reading specialist, the VLA that we've been talking about. Through that model, they started out, it was gonna be pre-K 3, and now they've jumped it pre-K all the way to 8th grade. We did hire for a start date of July 1 of '24, but we've already, you know, and those people are serving as teachers right now, when we first ran our numbers and said we were gonna have to have three at the elementary level, and so we did hire those three. When you're running the numbers now through middle school, you know, we do have two, one at each middle school, but what we would look at is, we would need four at the elementary, and I would like to add one, that way we would have five, you know, we would have one at each elementary school and one at each middle school, as far as a reading specialist goes. But we do have to add into the budget this year, at least right now, three reading specialists, and that's a.
Not four?
Well, it depends on where our number is. We could probably get through with one, but we could, I mean, our number is showing four, but I think we could use the.
Right on the, right on the line?
Right. But we have those, right now, we have, and, and the message from the State Department is, has always been, you know, if the money's there, then we're gonna require it, but if the money's not there, then there may be some flexibility. So it all comes down to budget. And so, if, if the money comes in from the state budget for those positions, then yes, they'll require it of us, but it'll depend on how that all works out in the end. So, we will have to add the three positions right now that we hired for start of next year, they automatically go in the budget, because we have to have those, and that's just, that's just a requirement. But like I said, it would be nice if we get, if we can get one at each elementary school, and then we'd have one at each middle school, and then you have that reading specialist there to run that remediation program, work with students, work with teachers, and that's basically their, their baby, their, their project, their, they oversee the reading program at the school, along with the principal, but, other than that, we have a big laundry, laundry list of requests from our schools, and Rob has those.
These are positions to begin with. I want to pass those down, and.
And again, this is, you know, these are nothing set in stone.
It's the wish list.
This is just the wish list from all of our principals and departments, so, so as we, we work through this, you know, we will, we will determine some of the things that, yes, we need to look at that, and adding because of this or that or whatever to move forward, so. But as we see where the budget is and kinda where we're moving, you know, that's gonna drive a lot of, a lot of this. So, and just so you know, when it says 1, 2, 1, 2, 1, 2, that's not how many positions, so it's not saying there needs to be, when you get down here, four ESL teachers, or where it says three pre-K floating subs at AS Rhodes, they don't need three pre-K floating subs. I asked the directors and the principals to list those in order of preference, one being your first choice, two being your second, and then everything else following down. So when you get to the three and the four, you know, those things are way down on the list of need at that school. So don't, you know, I just wanted to, to make sure that when it says request item, that's, that's in order of preference, so transfer, yeah, so when you look at Hill to Jay or Skyline High School right there, their first is two instructional coaches, their second is an ag teacher.
Yeah, that header probably should say priority, is what it is.
Yes, they should say priority.
Set a request item.
Yes.
And they have one instructional coach right now, right?
Skyline High School? I don't know if they have an instructional, I'll have to, I'll have to check.
Oh, is that, is that like Hope's instructional coaches? Are those like that?
Those would be building-based, right?
Those would be building-based.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think, does any school doesn't have a building-based instructional coach?
Well, we do, at some, yeah, so all the elementaries do, Skyline Middle School has two, so we do have some instructional coaches that are, that are based at the sites as well. A lot of our instructional coaches are funded through Title I funding. So also, another list that Rob will share with you is the, let's see here, wish list for facility upgrades and things of that nature. We're still synthesizing the non-labor requests. And as soon as we get the non-labor request document completed, we'll just send that, Dr. Daly, I'll just send that to you, if you can sort it out through the budget committee, if that's okay. Kind of where we're at with our, our non-labor, but as far as this document, again, it's in order of preference, one being their priority, and that's from each department across the division. Yeah, there are some things that we will have to definitely do, and I know, Dr. Daly, you and I have talked about it a little bit, but like, you can see the cooling tower on that second page at HJB, that's one thing that we, we've made it this year, we don't know if we're gonna make it another year, so that's something we probably have to do this summer, and I know when we finally sit down and look at our, look at, look at what's available for the E. Wilson Morrison project, to see also what's available for that cooling tower, because that could be anywhere between $50,000 to $80,000.
And since these are facilities, these would all go through, all of these requests would go through the CIP?
No, no, not, not all of these, so a lot of these we can put in. A lot of these, what we do is, we'll put in facilities budget.
Just the facilities and upgrades.
Yeah, and then they will get the, get the project done, so.
At what point do we start putting like dollar amounts on these?
So.
Do we wait till we know which ones are?
Yeah, one, I think we, you know, for a lot of these that, you know, some of them we will have dollar amounts on, some of them we will not, that we'll have to go out for, you know, for quotes, and just kinda seeing where the budget lands, too, and then what are the highest priorities to get things done, such as the cooling tower, that is going to be a high priority over at HJB, so some of these other things, could we, you know, we may have to push them off and, or something else comes around, or find alternative funding or something of that nature. So, but I think right now, where we're at is, we kinda, we have to start with our salaries first, see what it's gonna be for a step raise, and then a percentage plus, plus a step. The other thing that we're doing is, we're building in right now, I don't know what you're budgeting for, Dr. Daly, but we're budgeting a 10% on a health insurance increase. We haven't got our number yet, we won't get that probably sometime next month.
That's not what we're expecting.
Yeah, so the one thing I don't wanna do, and, you know, is, right now, since we've drained the, our health insurance fund, we no longer can supplement, so, you know, I've taken pride in making sure that, since I've been here, staff members have never seen a premium increase, so when they got a, when they got a raise, they got a raise. It wasn't, they got a raise, and then their insurance went up, so that, you know, that means that their, the raise wasn't as much, and so they were able to see those dollars in their pockets, because we were able to keep the, the health premiums flat where they were at. Right now, we're at the point, and I'll let Rob talk a little bit about the, you know, if we do get a 10%, how that would play out, and just remember, I think that the step between teacher scale, on the teacher scale, is about 1.3%, I believe is, from each step, so you go from step nine to step 10 is a 1.3% difference. So, Rob, you wanna talk a little bit of how that'll play out with the insurance?
Well, if the insurance goes up 10%, we, you know, we can do one of two things, we can, as, well, I guess you can do three things, you can either try to keep the employees You can either try to keep the employees' rate the same, which would mean the employer's contribution has to go up more than ten percent, which we have done that, as Dr. Fallinger mentioned, in the past several years. You could look at it and say, okay, the employer's gonna absorb ten percent, the employee ten percent in their increase, or, I don't suggest this, but you could say, well, the employee's gonna have to absorb it all. And, and that means their rates would go up much more than ten percent. So, that's, I guess, the things we would look at. Now, when you, when, when you look at it and say the salary scale, it has a one point three, so if you give everybody a step, they get a one point three percent increase, well, you'd have to look at it, and it depends on the scale and the, where the person is on the scale, but that's typically one point three percent of a number that's much larger than what the insurance premium is, so you can't correlate it and say, okay, if they get a one point three percent raise, they'd have to get a, you know, the insurance couldn't go up more than one point three percent to keep, to hold them harmless, that, that, you know, wouldn't work that way, but.
And... I think that's everything that we kind of covered, isn't it? Any other questions?
So, that's kind of where, I mean, we're just at the very beginning and starting, so we just kind of reviewed all of that as our, in our subcommittee, and, um, yeah, looking back at our, over everything.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I do, actually.
Sure.
Quite a few questions.
All right.
Okay, name the new kid on the block, all right? So, one of the first questions I have is how this committee works. This is a joint committee, right? So you have a school board committee, and then we have a joint board of supervisors school board committee. So, basically, what are we doing?
So, the, the role of the board supervisors is just to appropriate the monies, the...
And to be...
I mean, well, I'm gonna finish here. And our role is to, you know, determine all the caveats of it, and working alongside with you guys. So what we have done the last two years, I mean, I can only speak for that, is we meet regularly to, as the, and sometimes it changes, oh my goodness, multiple times, depending on where the state is with the governors and the House and Senate budget. We meet pretty regularly and then bring you guys in, and, and have, have these conversations and discussions about, you know, it throughout the whole time. That's why we have, so we set that up for the, from now until April, to have those conversations.
If I can, the, the two sub-questions are what, what role does the, the school board budget committee have relative to the administration? So, I, I see distinct entities, I see the school administration, see a school board that's elected to essentially provide oversight to that, then the board of supervisors, which is funding. Yeah, I know there's a separation between board supervisors and, and school board. And so, you know, what I, what I want to understand is roles all from, from the board supervisors down. And what I, I have a vision, and you can confirm it, or, or, or pop it, right? The administration runs the system, they, they know what they, well, one of the terms was laundry list, you know what you need, you know what you want, nobody knows better than you, the difference between wanting and needing. You're gonna present that to the board, to the, to the school board, and in my, in my view, and opinion, that is where some critical analysis should take place, that, you know, the school board is essentially in oversight, you're representing taxpayers, so you would be intimately involved in ascertaining the difference between want and need. Then, there's this joint committee, which is board of supervisors and school board budget committee. And wanting to know what my role in this is, you know, I hope it's not just to hear what you said in the last meeting and, and then understand it. Because I think that, and I'm, I'm not sure when this joint committee started, but it wasn't that long ago, as I understand, two or three, four years ago?
It was about two years.
Two years ago.
Okay, and I, and I, and I...
Two years, I don't know if they...
And I think that is, and if I don't misunderstand, the reason is because there is a better chance of a successful outcome, and there's more communication along the way. Okay, so, so I think a little bit of tension between the administration and the school board, maybe a little bit of, when I say a tension, just critical analysis, and perhaps a little bit of critical analysis between the board supervisors and the, and the school board, so that we end up where we need to be without a, a, two sides having a battle, basically. And, this is a perennial thing, where schools need, everybody needs more money, it's not just the schools, everybody wants more money, the board supervisors is sitting there with this, this much money, so, or pie doesn't keep getting bigger. So, I deeply want to understand and, to some extent, be able to critically analyze things as they're, as we're going through this process. I don't want to just get a product from the school board committee in our joint committee meetings and say, here's what we got. That's my desire, that's my hope, okay?
Well, and if you don't mind, sorry to interrupt, but I think that that's, you know, this was started to help with that, and I think that as, you know, 'cause when, when I first came in, we, you know, we had requests for our budget, and when we give you a budget, how many pages is that, Rob? It's multiple, with, with a lot of different lines in it, because the way we have to code. So there was a lot of misunderstanding or questions about it. So this helps to allow you as a subcommittee to dive into that, to ask the questions that, that you want answers to.
Right.
And for us to support our needs.
Yes.
And so, yes, and, and as this committee, you know, there was not a budget committee in Warren County until a couple of years ago, and I started one, that I allow the, you know, I look for their advice and their input as we work through this, because they are on the school board, and, you know, they're talking to the other members, and as we work through this, you know, I, I value their input as to what direction the school board sees the, the, the schools in going as well. Yes, you know, code does say that I'm supposed to put together a budget and present it to the board. But I think that the way that we have been working collaboratively, it has helped for a lot of different reasons, but, yeah, it is to, to come in and, and at times that, as we say, okay, we, we are wanting to go in this direction, for you to then say, okay, explain a little bit more about that, or ask other questions as far as whatever you may have.
Right.
So, you know, it's, it's not just a, a listening session as, as per se.
And I would say, I see it kind of as that information flowing both directions, you know, from my position, because we're obviously just two of our board, and the budget is gonna be up to our full board. So like you said, we're going to these longer meetings, and then we like condense it down and share it with the rest of our board, and then answer their questions that they might have, and then I feel like the same with you all. This way, you know, obviously this is a major chunk of the county budget, and this way you guys aren't just like getting it once a year and trying to figure it all at once, you guys have a stronger understanding, you can be sharing with them, and then if we do, you know, feel like we have a need for something, we can be talking about that, and you can have an understanding of what that is to make an informed decision. And at the same time, if you need to tell us certain news, good or bad, you can tell us in this setting, we can ask for questions, flush it out, and then just, you know, have that additional information that can be hard to get in our, you know, regular meetings, the way we're talking about a million other things.
Yeah, I think it's super important, a, a, as a county, all working together to avoid a narrative on the, on, in June, or whatever that date is, that we're having to make decisions that...
That's too late.
Hey, look at the, the board supervisors not supporting the school system, or, you know, something that'll affect. It's, it's perennial, it happens every year.
Right, or, or on the other side, being a rubber stamp and not even looking, you know?
Yeah, that is, yeah, that's an option, yeah. So, so what is the timeline for the work this committee does? From when to when?
Those are all numbers.
Until, until the board of supervisors approves a budget, then the school board approves a budget, and then we do have some dates on there that if the group wants to meet, and we have something to discuss, there are some of those dates listed there as well.
And I know, I, I just, I do wanna bring up, it's, it's been, it's been, I guess, known, or at least, at least said, that there have been budget, there's already been budget work going on, I mean, that, that there's been budget committee work going on prior to advertising the budget meetings.
No.
So there's not, so, nothing to do.
The first time we met was Thursday, was our first budget meeting for this year.
Okay.
Yeah, let's make that very clear.
Okay, good, that it is.
And, I mean, I'm always doing budget stuff, same as Ed.
Yeah.
So that's just our role.
Okay, so right now, there's no budget. There's, is there, is there a budget available to the public?
For next year.
For next year.
Next year's FY twenty-five.
FY twenty-five, there is not.
Okay. All right. Okay, so this is another general thing, this is another new kid on the block thing. I, everything I've heard, and I think was, was represented here, is that the, this, basically, we're not expecting more money to be available for the, for the system. I mean, is that a general statement, at least from the, from the state and from the federal government? 'Cause this actually indicates four million, four point four million dollars, I guess the bottom line, an increase of one point eight million dollars, coming from the state is a projection. Generally bearing the impression that that would be a smaller number, or a reduction coming from the state.
That whole left side is the state, not just the top section.
Yeah, and the bottom line is, is an increase of one point eight million dollars. I was under the general impression there would be a, a, I mean, obviously it was wrong, right, that there's, not, you're not expecting a several million dollar drop.
Well, I mean, we don't have the House or the Senate budgets yet.
Okay.
So, so there's, you know, there's, you're, you're gonna have the House budget, the Senate budget, they'll do their crossover, there's gonna be a lot of negotiation happening down there in Richmond to come up with, here's your final product.
This is just the governor's proposal.
Yeah, this is, this is the first one out of the bag.
Well, the, the, where, where I'm getting, what I'm getting through this is, is there, is there a general standing goal to find places to reduce costs?
Always.
Good.
Just as I explained, that we, you know, as funding for the CARES positions have went away, you know, we've went down from fifty-one people, and now we're proposing next year for twenty-one.
Yeah.
So, you know, we've, we've reduced thirty positions there, because the funding is going on there as well.
Right.
So, you know, that's one thing that I always want to do, is streamline to the best of our ability to, to meet our needs.
Okay. All right, well, you know, one of the things I need to bring up in our, in our first meeting is this, this substitute teacher analysis that came to my attention. And Mr. Daly forwarded, Dr. Daly forwarded this to me, and, um, I've spent a lot, I've spent quite a bit of time trying to understand this, and it's, I think it's not understandable. I mean, and I've talked to Ms. Salins, and my understanding is that you do stand behind this presentation. Are you familiar with this presentation? I mean...
No, I've reviewed it.
You've reviewed it, okay. The notion of starting the budget cycle with the general expectation that we're looking for ways to be efficient, to save money, to reduce costs, I think by having, and this was the, I think this was presented on January seventeenth.
Better work session.
Yeah, better work session, and it's, I guess it's not, it's definitely, doesn't come across as in the vein of a way to try to be more efficient.
Well, that's just a look at what possible cost would be.
Right.
That's not saying that you're going there, you're doing that.
Right, well, that's, that is a question I have about this, is, is, what's the purpose of this presentation?
So, the purpose is, we've had a lot of complaints about the sub-company that we do use. And it didn't come from a budgeting standpoint, those complaints, it's not, the, the concern isn't necessarily that we're spending too much with ESS, the concern is, we're not getting a good product. So we, as a board, have been requesting to see what are some other options, you know, are there other companies? Could we bring it in-house, what would those things look like? So that was one of the options.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna share my review of this, of this presentation with you, the draft, and at the end of it, you'll note that there are, are questions I have, you know, and I'll, I'll skip the end right now. Essentially, what I'm, what I'm seeking at the end of this is confirmation, so I want confirmation of monies that were paid, confirmation of vacancies that were filled, and confirmation of data out of these, some of these systems. The, 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 the bottom line really with this, this, that there's an apples and oranges comparison here. Now, when you say there's not been complaints about the cost of the system, that's, I don't think that's right.
I don't mean there's not complaints, that's not the primary reason that we're looking at it. The primary reason we're looking at it is complaints from staff.
All right. I'm not going to, to ask everybody to sit through this whole thing, but I am gonna ask you to look at it in detail, and, and I'm gonna ask you to respond to the quest, to the, the requirements on the back, because it is a, a brand-new guy, I'm a brand-new guy, brand-new on the board supervisors, brand-new in the budget committee of the school board, and the first thing that, that I see is a, an analysis that basically says that it's, it's gonna, if, if the school board was to take a process of providing substitute teachers, then it would cost eight hundred thousand dollars more than the contracted service that does it. And, I mean, that's a, that's a significant bump. So, the, the, you know, one of the questions I had about this is like, what's, what was the purpose of this? And it's definitely not a proposal, I understand. It doesn't say, we propose to do this. But it, it begs the question, we're, you know, i- if the administration accepts this analysis, then do, is that representative of the kind of financial hawkishness that, or lack of, that we would expect to see? You know, as I said, I think we can, you, I would like you to review this in detail, and then answer those questions, because some of the things in here are breathtaking. And, and there is a, there's a complete disconnect in the metrics between one of the, the systems and the proposed system. So, what I'm, I'm really pointing out with this is that there's probably plenty of analysis to do about this, this substance situation, but if this is a representative of the kind of costs and overhead that are acceptable, then, then I think there's deep, deep work to do, in terms of overhead, in terms of administration, in terms of essentially breaking down numbers. So, it's, this is labeled draft, because I am human, and I make mistakes. So, if I did, then I'll talk about it with you. But it's a, a, an important topic regarding the program, but also in regards to what kind of analysis capability do we have? And who did it, or who was responsible for it, and who was involved in it? I mean, there's a lot of financial information in here, so, you know, I don't know if Mr. Valentine was involved in putting it together, or if your assistant put it together, who, who, who did it? And, and as far as the, the school board, when this presentation is made, the school board, you know, my, one of the questions I have is, have you... have you dug into it? Did you get your hooks into this and ask questions? Did you get a preview of it before it was presented? Did you have any concerns about it? These are, these are the kinds of things I want to know in terms of being able to participate in a budget committee meeting or in budget committee that is analyzing numbers, analyzing data, analyzing why we have this many people doing this type of thing? Or why we're outsourcing this type of thing for this much money? And what alternative ways are there to do it? Like that, in terms of improvement over time, that's, you know, something I've had plenty of conversations with Dr. Daly and Ms. Meadows about is how we do things. You know, we have, we have as a goal adopted what we call the PACT, the Project for Accountability and County Transparency. That is going to involve work breakdown studies, functional baselining and things like that. So is it, is this as a general role, I kind of, I kind of want to, I guess I'm doing it. I mean, setting a tone of having a critical eye on how things are done. So that getting them, you know, into the realm of possibility for significantly improving them is, is real. That we're not just drifting over from this year to the next, saying, oh, we've got a, whatever our percent increase from the state is. So let's move the, you know, move that percent increase over to the budget, things like that. Let's, you know, be critical and do the best we can in terms of efficiency, financial efficiency and staff efficiency. And I'll leave it at that. I'll request everybody, the board and Dr. Ballinger to look at this and with a critical eye and say, I, either you stand behind it or maybe there's a revision that's required. There are specific questions on the last slide as to how did this happen and where did it go off the rails? Pretty confident that it's, that it did. And with that, you know, in terms of, I know my colleague Jay is an alternate on the committee plans to participate as well. So that's it. That's all I have.
Maybe just for a moment, our projections from VACO, the Association of Counties, indicate that state revenues total picture is going to be more like twenty-one, twenty-two than like twenty-three, twenty-four. And that there will be some reductions in state A in general. We don't know where and how, how the state will put the budget together. And we're not trying to second guess anybody. But that there will be less total state revenue than there was this current year because of some of the influx of other ones. This month, the board has been looking at our, our partner agencies. And they're going to finish those tomorrow night. And then February the eighth, a week from Thursday, they will start reviewing the budgets from the individual county departments. And those are going to take Tuesday and Thursday, the month of February. We think we will be done targeted February twenty-ninth. And at that point, we will be looking using, at using March twenty-nine, or February twenty-nine, excuse me, and March seventh as opportunities to look at revenues. And also summarize similar to your summaries here of everything people would like to have. Except ours will have numbers with it because they're going to present numbers with their requests when they meet with the board this coming, this coming month. So that the end of February, the first week of March, we will have a summary of what we think our revenues are going to be. And what we think our expenditure requests are. And then we come over and on March the twelve is when the board will be meeting with the school board to discuss that entire product request. And then the board will in March be looking to set the tax rates for next year. Any changes they make by the end of March so that tax bills can be ready the end of April to be due the end of May, beginning of June is the hopeful scenario. Then we pause a little bit to see where the state finishes their budget. And we're going to have all this put together and some scenarios, if you will, of A, B, and C in the board with some priorities. This is priority one, this is priority seven. And be able to, when the state comes back and they adopt a budget, to see how our budget would fit within the confines of the state. And that's usually done in June. And that's pretty much where I think we are in our budget process at this point.
So tell me what those twenty-one, twenty-two numbers are relative to the twenty-twenty-five numbers? You're talking about twenty, you're expecting?
No, I'm looking, when I say twenty-one, twenty-two, I'm looking at the total state budget with age of localities.
Okay.
And that if they were spending X billion this current year, two years ago, they were spending X minus approximately somewhere between five and ten percent.
Okay.
And we anticipate that their total expenditure for next year will be closer to that first number than the current number. And that means a lot of one-time expenditures where they put money in for one-time. I'm going to take an example with this CARES Act money. Now, this CARES Act money was a one-time, it's been stretched out three years. But it's actually a one-time expenditure. Our ARPA money is three years, expend, one-time expenditure, three years stretch out there. And I think those one-time items that came into the state budget and were dispersed this past year will not be available. The state was able to do, and I don't mean this positive or negative, either way. The state was able to do some bonus funding for employees. State was able to do some additional salary increases for employees. And they're not going to have as much unless they change the revenue side. But looking at the revenues under the current conditions, then, then there will be less money available for these items than there was this current year. And it will look more like the total two years ago.
So where does that delta at?
What's the delta?
Yeah, approximately. Where does that five or ten percent equate to?
Probably roughly two million dollars.
Okay.
How much of it will come directly to Frederick County, to Warren County, rather? I'm not sure.
Okay, in terms of reduction?
In terms of non-supplement as well as reduction.
A non-supplement is, we had last year, but we won't have this year from the state.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. So that's what I was referring to earlier in the meeting, the picture I have.
That's what we're expecting.
Millions of dollars less money than last year is on the way.
Unless the state or the federal does some type of new infusion project, like what they've done with their stimulus funding. And we don't anticipate that. But of course, we're always the...
So for me personally, that's a driving impetus. That's, that's why the intensity of finding their cost efficiencies anywhere we can is super important. Because we can't get to the end of this process as though we didn't know that and then have a gap of two million or four million dollars or, you know, whatever this, this, this thing ends up being.
And if they come back and use some alternative funding sources to make up that difference, then that's bonus in my mind.
You can't plan.
Because I'm playing the worst case scenario is what I'm looking at our budget. And if they look at their, some of their various funding sources and decide to make up the difference, then that's, that's a bonus.
And are those various funding sources sustainable too?
Well, that's, you know, that's another question. The, we have things on the county side, the counties had to work on the last couple of years that are not sustainable. And we know they're not. They have to be stopped.
In answer to your, your question or your point earlier about the state funding from twenty-four and twenty-five, I think maybe the reason it's looking rosier than it is is because we did move over that almost one and a half million out of twenty-four into twenty-five. And so twenty-four is looking lower than it really was and twenty-five is looking higher than it really is.
Up there in the, up there in the center, middle of incentive programs?
Yeah, the all-in per pupil funding.
The all-in per pupil funding, yeah, that got moved over.
So I mean, I think the actual increase is maybe a couple hundred thousand.
And none of this reflects what Ed was just talking about, if I understand correctly.
Right, but this is based on, you know, we get a calculation template from the governor and we put in our membership. And so these are the real numbers from the governor's budget, but certainly not the final numbers. They could go up or down.
And they may all, what the whole, whole picture looks like and what they end up doing may be very different.
Right.
Yes. So it's just a starting point.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't know. We're just at the starting point with it, so. Yeah, and I appreciate you taking the time to talk about what our intentions are, you know, as a committee. I think that's helpful for us to know what we're trying to do.
Yeah, we do need to know what we're trying to accomplish.
Yes, absolutely.
I think by doing that, we won't get to the end with the, I mean, if there's a big gap at the end and I understand it and I can explain it and be satisfied with it and be, you know. This, this example I gave is one in which I could not. So if I got to the end of the, of the finish line, we had a gap and that type of thing is there, I'd be like, I can't, can't, can't reconcile that. Can't stand behind it. If we're working together all the way down the way and I can stand behind it, then I will stand behind it.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I think maybe might add to the intent of the committee. Two years ago, we had a breakdown in communications. The school board was talking here and the board of supervisors were talking here. And we weren't together. And so this committee was created to address that. So that this type of information could get out early and the county's budget process could get out. And how they're going to come together, what the county's being told on the revenue side and what the schools are told, et cetera, they could communicate that.
Yeah, if I could, that, that's also a very valuable thing for me to bring into this committee is how frankly bleak things look on the financial side at our, at our board supervisors level. You all know about the EDA and all of that stuff that's going on. That there's no, there's no, there's no easy way here. So more, you know, having that fully understood while we're trying to work through difficult choices is something I'm interested in and being able to share the reality of. Well, thank you.